We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for the Thursday, November 19 Planning Commission. And if we could have a roll call.
Commissioner Shannon?
She on? Did we see her?
Commissioner Schaefer?
Here.
Commissioner Ali?
Here.
Commissioner Adams?
Commissioner Adams?
Here.
Commissioner Doscher? Vice Chairperson Blake?
Here.
Chairperson Eiler?
Here.
I'm going to try Commissioner Shannon? I see that she's online, but we don't see her on this screen.
Perhaps she can't hear us, or... Did you guys, you actually saw her online, so we can include her? Okay.
It was earlier also.
Okay, all right, we'll go with that. So, and I believe Commissioner Doscher called in sick, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and have the pledge. Commissioner Schaefer, if you could lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. I don't see the little sheet that we normally read off regarding COVID. I don't know if we have that tonight, but we'll go ahead and move forward without that, if that's... Basically, we're under COVID conditions, obviously. Some of us are zooming in, and it's open to the public to zoom in as well, so... And I know some of us are teaming in, not zooming in so much, but there, you have what was a page and a half, very condensed. Public comment on items not on the agenda. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in the meeting. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. We'll go ahead and open it up. Are there any, anybody here from the public that wishes to speak regarding items that are not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. We'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. Approval of the minutes from the September 23 Planning Commission meeting. Do we have any corrections, comments?
I would just like, I would just like to add, for staff, with some input from the last meeting, with staffs working to summarize that, so we, there was a few, a few, our attempt to summarize the decision-making process, but keep it short, but every meeting right now is being recorded in full and then posted to YouTube. And so, it's formatted through our IT department. So, every, every meeting is fully recorded, documented, and is there for reference. And so, going forward, we'll have those videos that can be referenced. And so, the meeting, the meeting minutes that were, that staff puts together here, they're somewhat as action items, where we're going to add a little bit of information to it as far as, you know, maybe the decision process on it, but the full meetings are recorded on YouTube available.
Okay. So, are you saying that we should be referencing those meetings, or, I mean, these are the minutes of record, correct?
These are the minutes of record, but also, the meeting is fully recorded and referenceable.
Available to the public and everybody, right?
Yep, and so, when I plan to send these out to you in the future for the Planning Commission, I'll reference the link, so it's readily available for the commissioners, but it's available through a search on YouTube.
Okay. With respect to the minutes of record that we have before us, I'll entertain any corrections, motions, whatever you guys have got.
Still moved.
Okay. Commissioner Ali is moved. And the second was?
Jana.
Commissioner Shannon, okay.
Oh, you can hear me, yay!
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're doing roll call now?
Yeah.
On everything? Okay. If we could have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Shannon?
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Ali?
Aye.
Commissioner Adams?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Blake?
Aye.
Chairperson Eiler?
Okay, so we have the minutes approved. Go ahead and move on to our public hearing for the evening, considering use permit 20-04 to allow construction of an oversized 60-foot monument sign and to allow an electronic message board as a portion of the sign located at UBSutter Mall. And I believe we have a staff report for that, so we'll let staff carry it away.
So, we're pulling up the presentation here, so the commissioners online should be able
For those of you that can't see what we're doing, we're having some minor technical issues
All right, so here we go. So, commissioners, can you see the presentation?
Yes.
Online, great.
Yes.
Okay, so, the item before you is in regards to a monument sign, use permit 20-04, UBSutter Mall, Marketplace Monument Sign. And so, project location is located at the south, so the northeast corner of 99 and 20, the southwest corner of the mall parcel. UBSutter Mall consists of over 400,000 square feet of building containing numerous businesses. So, the proposal tonight is for five new monument signs around the perimeter of the mall property. Four of those signs fall within the city's zoning, within the established zoning criteria that they're just over the counter permitted. The sign proposal, and then with this proposal, it also includes an electronic message board component. And so, in our, in our zoning code, if you have a sign that exceeds, that is proposed to exceed this 20-foot maximum, or an electronic message board component, it needs to come to the Planning Commission with the necessary findings and then with the approval. And so, that's for, tonight, we're here for the pylon A, that southwest corner of the parcel, and then for the message board component. So, here's a site, site plan, kind of give a visual of where these, where these signs are proposed to go, basically at the major intersection points, at the entrances coming in and out of the mall. And so, as we talked, here's the four other signs that staff has, they're basically, we're moving forward with a review on these because they fall within our code requirements and are doing that, and so, the focus tonight is really here, pylon A, down in the corner. So, a little information on the site. And so, the land use designation, the general plan land use has this as regional commercial. And as you can see, the majority of the area around the site is regional commercial with, we have the public with the Sheriff's Department and City Hall and the Veterans Hall on the west side. You have Target on the north side. You have some neighborhood commercial, commercial office over here on the east side with some medical, and then you have the park with some residences, the farther east you go. And then on the south, regional commercial. The zoning map, we have this whole area, we're right, we're right in the middle of the C3, C3 regional zoning for the project area. So, this is what we're looking at tonight. And so, the existing sign is a 35-foot-tall sign that was approved under an use permit by the Planning Commission in the 2000s. And then what we have today is a proposal for a 60-foot sign with the electronic message board component at the top. And so, with that, we'll get into it in here a little bit, and the applicants here and their team to help give a little bit of a basis as to the height and the message board One thing I want to do hit on is that there's a, there's a rebranding going on and a facade improvement. So, we have the UBSutter Marketplace as a rebranding around the mall, and then that also ties into a facade improvement that they've submitted building permits for and are working through, kind of in a phased approach, as they have tenants come in that meet the tenants' needs, that the team can definitely go into a little bit more for questions. And so, the sign before you, it's a multi-tenant sign. They have it broken down into tenant panels. These tenant panels don't necessarily have to have one, one name on them, they could be broken down into multiple, multiple tenants. And then we have the electronic message component of that. And so, in the zoning district right now, if you go over 20 feet, or if you go over 128 square feet in size, you need to come to the Planning Commission for approval. And so, this is a site that definitely, you see that with, with a mall being a large site, 10 acres, 10-plus acres, multiple tenants that don't have frontage with being inside, inside, you know, businesses that don't have frontage access. You see this around the country and previously with the city when they came for their, their past sign. So, here's a rendering of it at night. The sign will be backlit, or halo lit, as they call it. The sign, contractors are here, they could definitely add a little bit more information on what it will look like at night for the traveling public. Here are some renderings from proposed of what it, what it would look like when traveling on the roadway. I would say that these renderings aren't, aren't perfect, to be honest, but it's an attempt to kind of give a massing on the size and what it would look like going east and west. I think when you're going northbound, the existing sign's over here a little bit, and then when you're going, when you're going east and west, you'd have a different look So, here's, just for an idea of where the design comes from, is the proposed facade improvements, the renderings that have gone to the building department and have been approved or partially approved and waiting for, basically, permit issuance, depending on the phasing and how they want to do it. And so, here, I'll flip through a few renderings of the proposed facade improvements to the So, really to get into it, so tonight's decision for the Planning Commission is to confirm that the need for the height, and there has to be a finding, a finding that prior to approval of the use permit, the finding must be made that the Planning Commission, that the sign is needed to advertise businesses that have limited visibility from an adjacent public roadway. And with that finding, that that height is at a size that, that complements our area, basically. And so, there's six findings for an use permit, with the major finding for the, for the sign being that it is needed to advertise businesses that have limited visibility. And so, with that, we'll go through this a little bit.
Ben, can I interrupt for one moment?
Please.
Just for those that are online, if you wouldn't mind, if you're not speaking, to please mute yourself, because we're getting quite a bit of feedback from, I know it's the littlest thing, sometimes paper shuffling or whatever, but it would be helpful, because we're getting quite a bit of feedback in the room.
You know, Dale, it might be because I don't have the app downloaded, but I am not able to find the controls for turning my mic off.
Okay, all right, thanks.
So, we've been working with the mall for almost a year, I would say. I want to say, maybe, when I first started here in this position, early winter, February, March timeframe, we met with them about their proposed idea and what they're doing, something similar in Chico, and how they get the demand from tenants for having visibility and the size. And so, with their project application, you know, and with staff's concern, that we've, we've told them that there's been a real push over the last two decades on the, on the 2099 corridor to bring down the pole signs, establish a strong zoning criteria, sign criteria, that makes signs look, look nice as you're traveling through the city. And so, that, the sign, it's, it needs to look very good, and, and it needs to be respectful of the size. And so, with that, they, they put together their application and brought it forward to us with 60 feet. The zoning height is 52 feet for the, for this height in that zone, but it doesn't keep, it doesn't, the zoning height is 52 feet for buildings, but through the use permit process, you could go taller. And so, there are reasoning on that, and they're definitely here to help explain, but it's, it's to provide the many businesses that don't have visibility outside of the mall. The southbound 99 is, it's elevated, making it difficult for southbound travelers to know with some of the warning that the mall is nearby. You have, we got our list here. We talked about the many tenants, the demand for the, for the size of the spaces on it, and, gosh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait until after the present, after my presentation, then have the mall team come up, and they can really give the basis of it. But the finding for the use permit and for the height, really, the only finding that needs to be made to justify the increased size is that it's needed for the visibility for tenants adjacent to the roadway. And then it's really on the interpretation of what's respectful or what, what the need is for the community on, on what the commission establishes that. And so, with this, this is the electronic message board component of the sign. And so, this is definitely new to the city. When the zoning code ordinance was updated a few years ago, there was specific language in there that talked about how these aren't allowed except for schools or public facilities unless they're within 300 feet of Highway 99 or Highway 20, and they have to be for five-acre sites. And so, with that wording in the code, it almost makes it really specific to the mall, because you're not going to find five-acre commercial sites that are within the, not within the vicinity of 99 and 20. They're going to be major retail centers as, as the city develops. So, pursuant to SEQA, this was analyzed, just for if it needed to have the level of environmental review that needed to be obtained. And so, in SEQA, it's allowed for an exemption based on it being accessory structure to the mall. And so, even with its size and height, staff feels that it falls within that accessory structure to be considered as exempt. And so, here's the use permit findings, that as part of the, the use permit, the five that are standard, and then the sixth being the, for the sign specifically. So, the proposal is consistent with the general plan. The site for the proposed use is adequate in size and shape to accommodate said use, public access, parking, loading yards, landscaping, other features required by this chapter. The streets serving the site are adequate to carry the quantity of traffic generated by the proposed use. The site design and size of, and design of the building structure will complement neighboring facilities. The establishment or operation of the use or building applied will not be detrimental to the health, safety, peace, comfort, and general welfare of persons residing and working in the vicinity. And the sixth additional finding is required by the sign ordinance that the expanded sign is need to advertise a business that have limited visibility from the adjacent roadway. And so, with that, staff is recommending that we consider this categorically exempt under SEQA, and we approve the use permit 20-04 with the conditions of approval that specifically call for, it needs to be in compliance with Caltrans requirements, it needs to be in compliance with our electronic messaging ordinance, their section of our ordinance, and then the heights not to exceed 60 feet. And so, with that, I'll open it for questions, and then also for the mall staff to provide additional information.
Great. Thanks, Planning Director Moody. And with respect to that, I think what we'd like to do is just go ahead and hear from the mall team at this point, and then we can have our questions for both afterward, if that's all right.
So, Natasha, the best way to do it is, is hit the button there. If it's green, that means you can talk.
Oh, sure, here we go. Good evening, thank you everyone for having this meeting. I'm Natasha Shelton, I'm the General Manager at UBSutter Marketplace. Just to touch on what Ben has mentioned, you know, the landlord of the center is really not driving the bus on this pylon sign. This pylon sign is something that's come as a necessity and a requirement of our tenants that we're working with right now. Sure. Okay.
Sorry to pause it, but let's turn that one off. Yeah, let's, let's start here.
We won't pick you up on the, on YouTube, though, and that's super important.
Okay. So, just as I was saying, you know, we're not really driving the bus on the pylon sign. For us right now, retail, even pre, kind of pre-COVID, because we can kind of speak in these terms at this point, was in a, in a really volatile state. We have quite the transition occurring with online, with soft goods, and it's very turbulent with the bankruptcies. So, so we have been in a position to really transition our center, and we've been challenged with that. And we are fortunate that we have prospects that even in the middle of a pandemic are wanting to move forward, and we have an owner who has the capital to be able to invest millions into our center. We have some wonderful tenants lined up, but the challenge that we've had is that, you know, no longer are we finding tenants that are going to take up 100,000-square-foot box like a Sears or a JCPenney. We have anchors now and tenants that are going into smaller footprints for a lot of reasons. There's omni-channel, there's all these different colors to unpack with retail that, that the footprints have shrunk quite a bit. So, we're looking at tenants now that the most that they're wanting to take are 25,000 square feet. If we're lucky, we can get someone at 40,000 square feet. So, how that translates here is that we have, you know, a couple large boxes that aren't likely going to be backfilled with one tenant. So, before, our existing pylon sign was sufficient because you only have three anchors. You have a Sears, you have a Gotchox, and you have, you know, a JCPenney. Now, we're having to split those boxes up. So, our pylon sign has to not only accommodate more panels, but the other challenge that we're having is that these tenants that we're working with have very strict requirements with respect to visibility. It's something that's non-negotiable. If they can't have visibility northbound and southbound, they, they won't even consider the, the location. So, we were working in Chico, something similar. We recently were successful in approving a large pylon sign there, the largest one in history that they've ever approved for Chico, for the same reason. And our, our tenants that we have ready to sign leases, we can't sign them until we have a pylon sign that's large enough for, for visibility for them. And kind of the other part of that, too, is that, you know, when we were evaluating the center for a remodel, we talked about having multiple monument signs. Our code allows for, I think we have 5,000 feet of frontage, and we certainly don't want to litter the property with 16 monument signs for every 300 square feet. So, you know, for us, we want to touch on the main entrances, but we want to make up for that in our pylon sign. So, we need to have room for our, for our multiple tenants that we're going to have because our boxes are going to be broken up, and we need to have visibility. And the LED portion is a little bit different. One of the reasons that we, that we want to pursue that is that we have, we can work with multiple tenants that are inside the mall that might not have visibility on the pylon. We can put them up for a week or a month. Certainly, as Ben alluded, we would comply with the Caltrans requirements, but that would give us more flexibility to advertise for more tenants. So, that's just kind of a little bit of a background on why we're pursuing this taller
Okay. So, with that, we'll go ahead and open it up for questions of staff or the mall, and we'll go ahead and start. I see Commissioner Ali there is first on the screen, so we'll just go ahead and start with her. Do you have any questions, Commissioner Ali?
Um, I do. Well, I'm concerned about the, the top piece of it, the fact that it's eight foot over our code. Having participated for years in the process of developing that sign ordinance and sent it off then to City Council to have it ratified part of our code, I, I see that you're doing the other signs, and I think that's great because they all work within our compliance. But I guess what my question is, is how essential is that digital top? I mean, myself, maybe it's because I come from the backwoods of UBS city, but when I go in, into Roseville and I see that, those huge digital signs, I see them as a big distraction. So, how essential is that top eight feet and, yeah, please? I, I hear you saying for them, but what about for us, for the city? Why would it be essential for us?
I think for the city, you know, we're, we're trying to attract and pull customers, and especially going back to our tenants and their requirements, we need to be able to pull a certain amount of people traveling that might not be residents of UBS city. They might be people coming in and out from, of town, and we need to have something that can pull their eye toward the sign, and so, we can advertise something that allows additional traffic to come into the center that otherwise wouldn't be there. I think growing up sort of in smaller communities, you know where the mall is, you know what tenants are in there, and you might not even notice a pylon sign because you already know who's there. But the prospects and the tenants that we're working with now, the stores, the retailers, they have such a high demand for pulling in outside traffic. Their sales per square foot has to be a certain level, and in order to, to achieve that, we have to have a high amount of traffic that visits our center. So, the tallest pylon sign, the most visible pylon sign has become a requirement. I think that's going to help for the city as well. If there's something, you know, if there's an event that we want to advertise, we would like to be able to do that as well. And again, it's, the LED portion's not meant to be distracting. We would certainly follow the, the guidelines in Caltrans, and it wouldn't be a flashing sign in any way. So, so we're really just trying to pull more people from, from the, from the road.
Okay, but there's like a dichotomy there where you say it's to attract, but it's not to distract. And several years ago, the Planning Commission met with a billboard company that has many bill, all, I think all of the billboards in our area, and we were opposed to what they were proposing because of the distraction. And also, the Planning Commission and City Council at that time also upheld the notion that we would have to take down three regular billboards to put up one of those digital billboards as an improvement to our community. So, I just want to put that information out there because I'm somewhat concerned about the flashing part. You know, we just did, since COVID hit, a woman pulled up to that intersection, and a big truck drove over the top of her and her vehicle. So, I'm just concerned about an attraction that's actually a distraction, and we have more of that type of incident. So, I, I know that's not a question, but that's a concern, because we worked so hard to come up with, we are at least trying to be thoughtful of that. And is it a big problem for there to be more than one of the businesses on each of those signs with the backlighting or the lighting in the back?
I, I don't think, I mean, I think for us, we're not, as I said earlier, we're not going to have, our intent is not to have a flashing going to have, our intent is not to have a flashing sign. We just want to have a well-lit LED sign that can be digitally changed. So we would have maybe, you know, one tenant, let's say, just for a hobby store at the top for a month, but it wouldn't be moving, it wouldn't be flashing. The intent would be just to give us an opportunity to have something that can be digitally changed.
And is that built into the conditions at all, Ben? And also, just one last question is, when we were considering this, we thought that for the city and for emergency services, it would be a part of any of these agreements to be built in that if there was such an emergency and like another threat from Oroville or a fire or something, that any digital signs that came into the community would be available immediately for emergency services? And is that built into this?
Okay, so regarding the flashing, there's a, it does, it's referenced to follow the code as written, and in the code, I'm trying to find the section. It's pretty detailed how it was established. What number is it? Signs may only change their static image once every 10 seconds. And so 10 seconds, I don't know if I'd call that flashing, and I don't know how to do it, but the way the code's written is it needs to be stagnant for 10 seconds and not change faster than that. Additionally, regarding the public portion of that, we specifically called out in the conditions of approval, the criteria, but it's also in the code that 15% of the time can be used for public announcements. And so that is established and memorialized in there, and then we also put the criteria in there that talk about the time of day and then also at no cost, in addition to complying with Caltrans requirements, because Caltrans also has requirements that you can't advertise in a business that's off-site or some sort of announcement off-site if it's within a certain, without a permit from Caltrans. And so there's some consideration with that also.
Thank you. I think that's the end of my questions for now.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Ali. Next on the list right here, Commissioner Adams.
Hi. I don't have any questions in regards to this. I think the sign looks great, and I look forward to the mall having new tenants.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. Commissioner Shannon.
Okay, to start out, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I, my question kind of follows up on Daria's. I like the sign, and I think if there's any place in the community that that sign would be appropriate, that is the place. But I am concerned and would like a little more information from Ben about the availability to the city in the event of emergency. One of the things that we had just been through was the Oroville debacle, and there was some concern that we didn't, that we hadn't addressed that in some of our previous discussions. Having something, having the ability to tag with the landlord immediately and say, you know, we've got to get this information out, you know, like evacuate to State Route 70 or something like that immediately without, you know, a lot of protocol that goes along with that, I would like to make sure that the immediacy for emergencies is addressed.
Yes, so absolutely. So Section 856312, it specifically states that electronic message boards shall be available for emergencies such as distressed conditions, i.e. flood, natural disaster, et cetera, law enforcement emergencies, other Amber alerts, or issues of statewide concern such as drought conditions. At the request of the city, time allocated for the city requested messages shall not exceed 15% unless determined to be an emergency by the city. And so that's definitely what comes to mind with that section. And then with the condition of approval.
15% of the sign, 15% of the time, I can't, I didn't grasp what that 15% meant.
15% meant 15% of the time. And then additionally, condition of approval number seven, the electronic message board shall not exceed 180 square feet. Let me see. Oh, here we go. So number eight. So the electronic message board shall be available for any city public messaging at no cost, as requested by the city, not to exceed 15% of the time per day between the hours of 7:00 and 11:00, in accordance with Caltrans requirements. And so we establish, we tightened it up a little bit from the existing zoning ordinance by establishing that 15% during that time of day from 7:00 to 11:00 without costs. And I would definitely say, working with the applicant, they are, there's definitely, you know, open and acceptable and understandable to that, and it's just what was relayed to us. It's just, we tell them what they want, and they'll coordinate to get it up. Regarding the, some of the flashing, I want to, Caltrans didn't know, Caltrans is online today, one of their planners, and so she did want me to relay that Caltrans comments are also that the brightness of the sign needs to be in accordance with their requirements so it does not pose a danger for the drivers in the evening due to glare. And in that, so with that sign, they'll need to meet those requirements. And also, the strict guidelines that are established for those, for our electronic message boards in the code, it really does have specifics regarding that it needs to dim during nighttime hours, and there's specifics on what the diode is not to exceed a certain pixel pitch, and then as far as the, what the definition is, and the glare. So I could answer, 0.3 foot candles above the ambient light. So there's some specifics in there.
So as far as the city's access, we get 15% of the time, and in my mind, out of 24 hours, that's not very much time if we're experiencing a major catastrophe, unless we're talking about, you know, every, you said something about those things changing every 10 seconds or something?
So unless, unless determined an emergency, so 15% of the time between 7:00 to 10:00 for a general announcement that says the senior center is taking applications, or, you know, enrollment for the pool. But then for emergencies, we could take it, it's basically unless determined to be an emergency, and it could be up pretty much full-time. And I haven't heard any feedback from the mall that they would have an issue with that in an emergency situation.
And, you know, we're certainly, we are a community center. I mean, that's, we play a huge role in the community, and especially in disasters. You know, recently at Chico, we had the campfire. We had FEMA there. We served as a hub, really, and it's the same thing here with the dam evacuation. It would absolutely be our intent to support the city, especially in an emergency. So there wouldn't be any issue there with cascading, you know, messaging during an emergency. It would, we would be happy to do that. It's appropriate for our center.
Well, I would, I would like to see that memorialized in the conditions of approval. I mean, it doesn't have to be a big hairy thing, but just somehow, because you may not always be the landlord.
Sure.
And these agreements will go with, run with the land. So just something small that just talks about, you know, a severe emergency, like the campfire or Oroville Dam, or those sorts of things. I'm not talking about the general announcements. 15% is fair. But having that memorialized in some way means something more to me.
We would be agreeable to that.
Okay. So let me ask, I'm going to play off that for just a moment. Ben, is that already covered in there with the emergencies, or is that not, is what Janice, Commissioner Shannon's speaking about over, kind of over and above that?
So condition of, condition of approval number seven references the zoning code, and the zoning code specifically says unless determined to be an emergency by the city, with meaning more time than 15%. But it's definitely, with the applicant being agreeable to it, we could, we could spell it out in item eight where we add a section there that says unless determined an emergency to be used at the city's discretion.
Great. Okay.
I mean, if some, if language is agreeable.
Commissioner Shannon, any other, any additional questions?
No, that's my, my main concern. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Commissioner Blake.
Thank you. Good evening. I have, just not to beat a dead horse, but a follow-up on that criteria for advertising, please. So the public announcements, I understand that component, and the Caltrans requirements, but I'm just wondering if that electronic portion that is being proposed tonight will conduct advertisements for anything other than tenants and public announcements?
No. Any messaging on the board is going to be related to the center. It's not, we're not going to have any third-party or outside advertisements. And truly, we really need the LED portion to advertise tenants. That's really our intent, because we can't fit everybody on the pylon sign. So it's really just giving people equal opportunity to advertise for a shorter period of time on a sign as opposed to switching out panels, which is much more permanent. So our intent is really not in the way of advertisement, other than events and, you know, any city messaging required. That's really the intent of it.
And, well, first and foremost, I'm a huge fan of, well, what we're calling Yuba Center Market. I remember in 1990 when it was built, and it was a big deal when I was in high school. So I would love to see it come back to its splendor and get those potential or prospective tenants that you're looking for. I do have a question. You said that due to signage and lack of, perhaps, we're not reaching the criteria that these potential or prospective tenants have. What is it about this one particular sign that will bring these people here in lieu of the other four signs that are already meeting our zoning codes?
Sure. The other four signs are going to be used, I don't want to say just directional, but it's going to pull from other areas. It's not going to pull visibility from the freeway. And right now, a really, a real hot button with our, the retailers is having visibility from a freeway. If we had a center that was positioned, you know, much farther from the freeway, I don't think it would be as much of a hot button because it wouldn't, there wouldn't be the opportunity there. But because of where our center is positioned, you know, near the freeway and the major thoroughfare, it's a requirement that it be very visible to pull people that are not only in the community, but people that are also passing through.
And then my last component is, because it's near a freeway, I feel the visibility of the entire opportunity to utilize that as a shopping center is indeed already there. But again, like you pointed out, I live here, and I know what our opportunities are there. So I do have some conflict with the, that it may not complement with the beautification efforts in which the city has been producing, especially being a major intersection. And the other component is, what are the studies? I didn't have a chance to look at the studies, but for, I'm assuming there's poor driving. We already, like Commissioner Ali has pointed out, we already have a lot of difficulties in certain great intersections, and I'd hate for this to lead to additional poor driving habits and increased chances of accidents.
Well, and I think that-
I didn't even talk to any of our local law enforcement or what the research has shown. And I totally get the advertising component, absolutely.
I don't think that, I mean, when Ben had mentioned to be able to change, I think, every 10 seconds, it certainly, it's not going to be our intent to have it, the message changed all that often. It's definitely going to be a standing message, I would say, at least for a day. I couldn't imagine, I mean, I would be the one managing it. So we're not, we're not, our intent is not to constantly advertise on there. And like I said, it's going to only be tenant, tenants or tenant-related events. You know, we, we are a community center, and we care, obviously, about the community, and we certainly would not have any intent to install a sign that would cause any sort of traffic accidents, which is why we would work closely with Caltrans to ensure that we are following all of the guidelines for the LED signs. But like I said, it's really just going to be a static sign. We're not going to have flashing. It's just going to be, we just want the opportunity to be able to change the message, mainly for tenants.
Okay. Thank you. Like I said, I hope we get a lot of excellent tenants. So good luck.
As do we. Thank you.
Great. Okay. And Commissioner Schaefer?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So obviously, there's eight panels plus the top illuminated part. Did someone do a study or something on average speed coming through that intersection that requires those panels to each be this particular size, that when you add eight of them, it requires a 60-foot sign to get it all on there? I mean, how did they arrive at 60 feet instead of 50 feet?
Sure. For us, we had to fit a certain amount of panels, and we have to have visibility, you know, like I said, northbound, southbound. The slides that Ben had up earlier that showed the visibility north and east, you know, as you can see in those slides, even at this size, it's not, it's not as great as we would like it. So we, you know, we can have the sign company jump up and who put this together as well. But we determined that it needed to be that sized to at least have sufficient visibility. You know, we weren't going to propose larger than that.
Okay. Okay. And just curiosity, so you, I think you said earlier, you're going to control that board? So it's ownership controls the board?
Sure. Yes.
And the illumination portion, you're going to be able to determine the messages they could put up there?
Correct.
And I think, I don't know, maybe from what you said earlier about Caltrans, Ben, that there's certain advertising you can't do for, and you said you're not going to advertise for outside people. It's just going to be for the tenants?
Correct.
So-
That's actually, that's actually detailed in the zoning ordinance, too, where it says, "Section E, electronic message boards may only advertise establishments and/or products available on-site."
And are those ads bought by the tenants in that building, built to put up there? How do you make that determination? Who gets their message up at what time? I mean-
Sure. So even on the, even on the panels outside of the LED, a tenant, unless they negotiate it in their lease, which three of our, what we'll call anchor tenants have already negotiated, which will be part of their lease, included in their rent, if another tenant wants to jump on the sign, they will have to pay him. It's usually a monthly fee, and that's something that's negotiated and discussed. And we will have to determine what the cost is on the LED portion. It will be something additional. I mean, I'm sure that there's going to be times where, you know, it will be something that we throw in free of cost, but most of the time, there is going to be a fee associated with that.
Because I could just imagine your probably most productive tenant's going to have enough money to continue to pay.
Sure.
Get their, get their ad up there constantly.
Sure.
The little guys in the mall might not be able to get advantage of that particular sign.
Right. And again, our intent is not to say, you know, it's a BOGO deal, like buy one, get one. I mean, we're, that's really not our intent for that sign. It's really, it's really to advertise the tenants that are there. So we might have some locally-owned businesses that are in line that won't have any ability to go on to the, to the pylon sign panels. So it would be something that we could certainly negotiate as part of their lease for the first three months or whatnot of their lease. We will advertise them on the digital sign. That's really the way it will work.
Okay. And the, so we've narrowed down the fact that you can only advertise for the tenants. Give me an example of what you would anticipate the messaging to look like for JCPenney. What would you advertise on there for JCPenney? What kind of content would it say?
You know, truly, I would, I couldn't think really beyond their tenant name. You know, we could certainly, they could certainly have some sort of annual sale, you know. We're not, we're really not trying to dilute it where we're getting into advertising a sale on jeans or something like that. It's really going to be, you know, it would have to be a pretty significant sale for us to advertise that. So, you know, we would have to take it case by case. But like I said, our intent is not to, I can't even imagine changing it daily.
And Ben, you said the content has to be related to the business. It can't be JCPenney buying it and saying, "Vote for so-and-so in the next election."
No.
Okay. It has to be-
Correct. It's for, it's for advertised establishments and/or products available on-site. And so it could be an announcement.
Okay.
That says grand opening, new store, store, but, but it has to be for on-site stores. And then additionally, Caltrans has a similar requirement that they would have to go through another permit process if they, if they wanted to turn into some sort of off-site sale.
Okay. And then last question. So the mall owns the sign. I'm assuming the mall's going to assume all of the operational costs, utility bills associated with keeping the thing going 24/7?
Correct.
It's not going to be a deal. You're going to have to cut the city, and it's going to have to pay for some of this as well?
No, we pay for it now. We will continue to pay for everything associated with the sign. sign.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I think I'm the last one on the list. So a couple of questions that I have. And actually, I would really like to hear from the sign company too, in terms of, how did you come up with the height? To me, I've just got questions about the height. So the current sign is 35 feet, and our zoning takes it up to 52. And you, you guys want to go almost twice as high with 60. Actually, I think, did you want to go higher than that? Originally, you had asked for that.
Originally, you know, we would propose 85 feet if we thought we could get away with it. But, but 60 feet for us, like I said, if you look at these slides, you know, we really need to have that visibility. And again, it's not the landlord, and I truly, I mean that. It's, it's really our tenants that are driving the bus on it. So we settled at 60 feet to provide adequate visibility north and south.
Okay. So just out of curiosity, you said you just did one in Chico?
Uh huh.
So how tall was the sign in Chico?
The Chico only allowed for 20 feet for their pylon. And it was interesting. It's a dated code and it had never been modified, so we didn't even have the ability to go to 52 feet. We originally proposed 85, and we would have to have gone to a PUD, which we didn't have the time for these tenants to sign the leases. So we settled at 57. You know, the architectural review board, which was the process there, actually, you know, asked us, "Why didn't you come in higher?" Because they would have approved higher. We didn't. Again, because of the PUD, we didn't have six months and we just didn't have the time to do that. You know, unfortunately, with Chico, even at 57 feet, it's not going to be as visible as we would like. But working with planning, that, that was where we, we had to settle.
Okay. And doesn't, Chico has an elevated freeway, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So 57 feet with an elevated freeway?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. So I'm just going to back up for a moment for a little bit of comment in, in that Commissioner Ali made a comment about the, the sign ordinance that we went through. And I can't even remember how long ago that was, but I'm guessing it's been at least four years, something like that. I, I, somewhere in that neighborhood. And I know some folks that spent, I didn't personally, although I was on the periphery of it, at the time I was on the chamber board, and I know that they had a voice and, and I was listening to that side of things. And they spent a lot of time going through the sign ordinance and what was appropriate for signs in the area. And the issue isn't necessarily what the sign looks like today or tomorrow, when you put, when you put the sign up, because it's going to look great. But when you look at those signs that have been out there for 30 years, and, and that's, you know, when digital, who knows what, you know, it's like when you install the, the greatest carpet and it looks really, really great today, but, you know, 10 years from now, it's, it's like, oh my gosh, why were we so edgy with that? Because it was just, you know, it was just too much. And I'm not saying that, but I'm, with the, with the sign, that's kind of what I'm, what I'm getting at, is that, you know, out in the future, these signs deteriorate over time and it makes it, you know, so that's, I think that's part of why the sign ordinance is where it is. And the other thing that I, I worry about from going outside of the sign ordinance is the, the potential that, for the precedent that we're setting for other signs in the area. So, you know, that, that weighs heavily on my mind in terms of what I think, in terms of the sign. And I know that we're talking eight feet, and I don't know what that does in terms of, you know, I'd, I'd like to ask you, what, what does that do to the sign? Because we don't have any renditions of what that would look like. But what would you be leaving off of the sign if we said, hey, we need to be, we'd like you to be at 52 feet?
Sure. So I just wanted to touch back to your comment, which, I mean, I think we all, in remodeling homes and buildings, look back and say, "I can't believe, you know, we had pink tile at Chico. We had pink tile," you know, "and we have, we have photos of it in the 80s and it's in its height." I think we've done a pretty good job. Of course, it's, right now, it's a point in time that we've created a pretty timeless sign.
It's going to look good, I'm sure.
And, and one of the things I can tell you, from being in this business for so long, you know, the, the stores coming in, notable stores, stores, stores that you're going to want in your community, aren't going to allow a 30-year-old sign. So by default, you essentially end up updating your signs anyway, which is why we're here now. We've got a 35-foot dated sign that, you know, it, it was great at the time, but now it needs to be not just only updated, but it has to have visibility. And that's, again, the tenants are driving the bus on that. So even if we were a landlord not willing to do it, we wouldn't get away with attracting these type of tenants by leaving a sign like that. So by default, those get updated. And I guess secondary to that, you know, the eight feet, and it's not, we're not asking for much. It's, it's just eight additional feet, but it does really help us with the visibility. And again, that LED portion up there that we would allocate at the top allows us to change out the tenant signage, which is really the flexibility we need. So, you know, we're really just looking for visibility. I think I agree with setting precedents. This came up actually with Chico as well. And, and I think I could confidently say here at Yuba, you know, there's not a lot of other centers, retail centers of this size. So I think when someone comes in, and, and also its proximity to the freeway, which were two, two guidelines that they used at Chico, was the size of the center. It was the largest retail center in town, and it was the closest to the freeway. It's kind of the same formula here. You know, we're over 400,000 square feet. We're, you know, our proximity to the freeway. So I don't think there are many other centers that are going to fit in that to set precedence anywhere else.
Okay. If, you said the sign company was here. Can we ask them? What, what would they envision if we said, "Hey, this thing needs to be at 52 feet"? I, I think, okay. And just for the record, state your name and company as well, would be helpful.
Joseph Berg, president of Aner Signs. The number one intent of the sign is, is to be easily read. You have to be able to see it. So it's not a gaudy thing. It's a matter of taste. And when your, your client, when it, when they're coming up and down the road, they're usually talking, distracted, doing something, you know, inside the car. So you have to be able to-
Go ahead and put your microphone up, so, because it'll come through on YouTube better.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
So the, so you need a amount of square footage to do so. And you can see on, just on here with the logos and things, as you start putting that up, which every national person, I'm sure you can attest, says you, inside the lease, they have to have their information up there their way. But when you start fitting it into a smaller area, it be, it becomes difficult to read. So you have to make the panels large enough so that it can be legible, so that people aren't trying to search for it. And then to us, that's a safety issue. So the height that we've gone at with the, with the overall height, and that's, that's kind of misleading, because it's not all signage and structure. Did I answer your question?
I guess my question is, if we, if we tonight said, "Hey, we want to stick with the zoning ordinance with the 52 feet," what would, how would that sign look different than it does now? Would you just shrink everything proportionally, or what would you do?
If you ask for that, then you're, then you're cutting down on the, on the tenant panels themselves, and you're making the signage more difficult to read.
So you're saying you would just shrink everything accordingly?
Yeah. Because the lettering on it right now is of, is of the height that it can be read safely as you're traveling. So you can't, if you picture, oh, well, we know where it is and we pull up and, and we can see it and we can read it, but that, you're not the person that the signage or the mall needs to attract. They need to attract the people that are just driving by not paying attention. That's, that's typically what you're looking for, for a sign to do.
All right. Okay. Yeah. So you answered my question. Basically, you would shrink everything proportionally and came down to the 52.
But it would make it difficult-
More difficult to read. Understood.
And the, and the electronic board, if you picture it as a, not what you're looking, clear, are used to with Clear Channel, where they're always flashing the advertisement, that's not what this is for. The electronic board usually is, is going to be what the mall said, which just allows you to put up conveniently. You can't change structure every time you want to put a new tenant up on there. And that's what makes signs look really old, as you keep taking them out, putting them up, taking them out.
Got it. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. What I'd like to do at this time is go ahead and open it up for the public hearing portion. And is there anyone here that would like to speak from the public? Anybody? Nobody? Okay. Going, going? You sure? Okay. All right. So we'll go ahead and close the, the public session. All right. Any other questions for staff or the mall or comments?
I have one comment to the chair. And I like the sign. It looks beautiful. You've done a nice job with the design of it.
And this is Commissioner Schaefer, by the way. Sorry.
Yeah. So I guess my, my one concern, and really it's your concern, whether it would be mine, is that there's adequate representation of the smaller guy in this mall. When you start, you know, charging tenants-
Sure.
-for space, I mean, obviously, it's through your own detriment, because if you're not giving them enough space, they lose their business. They end up going out and you got backfill some space.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
So I just hope that, and how you design, what you charge and that kind of stuff, that you're keeping the little guy in consideration, so they get some, you know, an adequate amount of time up on that sign, since that's, you're telling us that's your reason you're doing it.
Sure. And that's a valid comment. And, and I can tell you, at Yuba Center Marketplace, we actually have quite a few locally-owned businesses there, far more than, than we do at Chico. And, and right now, every landlord across the US, especially every mall landlord, our goal is to keep, is to keep our tenants. So we have to get really creative, whether it's an advertising cart or a, a marketing event where we conclude them. So, you know, they will absolutely be advertised on there, because it's in our best interest. It's in everybody's best interest to keep, to keep the space occupied and to keep them in business.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was saying. Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Motions?
I have a comment that I think that Jana's suggestion that we memorialize some of these things that she is sharing with us, that that's going to be their approach, because also, as Jana mentioned, we could have a new owner of the Yuba City Marketplace in a year or two years, that might have different ideas about how to utilize that sign. And I, I also think that the maintenance idea that you suggested should be built into it. And Ben, you're going, you'll have to help me on this one, but is there something that if it, if some, for some reason, the mall was vacant for six months, does the, that sign have to come down? Is there some requirement about-
So, so in the existing zoning code, there is a section on maintenance that basically is, if the city sees as debilitated, that we have the right to issue them a notice that says it needs to be corrected within a certain amount of time. And so that is in our existing municipal code under the zoning code. As far as the non-conforming sign and losing, losing their right, it would be like every other sign. So, so I would say, yes, should the mall become totally vacant, in, you know, dil, I don't see that with so many tenants and so many properties that are there, but, but should the worst case happen where it is vacant for, I believe it's nine, six months, I can't remember, 90 days for some reason, but there's a time period. If it exceeds that, then they would use, lose their right and they would have to come back for a new use permit, or it'd need to be teared down with, with the construction.
My only comment to that would be, of course, in the middle of a pandemic, if it's something that we're not in control of, if it's a forced closure, and there's not any room for interpretation on vacancy versus being, you know, forced to close for a certain period of time. So, I mean, I think we would obviously be amenable to that, but it would have to be with the caveat that if there's a forced closure, you know, as a result of a pandemic or, or something like that, 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 you know, it'd have to be reasonable.
I would think that would be something reasonable. And, you know, obviously, it would be, if there was a closure like that, it'd be with a different owner anyway. So, anyway. I, I'd like to make one comment bef, well, go ahead. And I, and I want to make a comment before the motions come as well.
I just, Ben, on the comments that we've received from Jana and Daria-
And this is Commissioner?
This is Commissioner Adams.
Okay.
I believe all of those are covered through the code and through the ordinance, if I'm not mistaken. I don't, I don't remember hearing anything that was unique, that would need to be memorialized in the agreement. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I believe the piece that we were looking at memorializing would be the comment, the comment. Sorry about the feedback. Perhaps you could turn off your mic so I can talk?
There might be some other folks that are still unmuted.
Okay. So the memorial-
Or muted, I mean.
Was in relation to how the digital space is going to be utilized. And the, the parts, yes, I, I do agree now that the emergency services portion and such are built into there. But the idea that it's not going to be for ads, that it's for promoting the business, you know, we've had a lot of statements along those lines, and perhaps Jen can help me on some clarity on some of that.
Commissioner Ali, I'd, just one thing. I think, as I read through the packet, I believe that that is already memorialized in there in terms of the-
Could you point that out to me?
I thought it was in here in terms of, say that again. What language were you specifically that? Yeah, there, there definitely was a section in here somewhere that said that they could not advertise to, I don't know, John Schaefer's in my real estate business, that, you know, unless we set up a little kiosk in the middle of the mall somewhere.
So in the zoning code, it reads, "Electronic message boards may only, may only advertise establishments and/or products available onsite."
Okay. So it is in the zoning code?
And then regarding non-conforming signs, in the zoning code, if the use of a non-conforming sign is abandoned, discontinued, or terminated for a period of six months or more, the right to continue to use the non-conforming sign shall expire, and the signs shall be removed within 90 days. And so in, in the zoning code, which is referenced in the conditions of approval, let me see which number, I think we specifically say to follow the zoning code, regarding number seven, for the, for the digital portion. And then, but, but there is, as stated, that, that there can be some specifications, like on the, the emergency part, you know, if, if there wants, wants to be a little bit more specifics than just the, the code language that we call out specifically in the condition of approval, such as, you know, determined emergency at the city's discretion. But it's really your preference in, in working with the applicant and seeing what they're agreeable to do.
Okay.
I see the pieces in here, except they do allow for the advertising that we're being told isn't going to happen. But otherwise, I'm okay with it. I also want to comment that I'm really happy to see them do something positive with the mall or the marketplace and hope it works for them. And that's the end of my comments.
Okay. I, I had one additional comment that I wanted to make, and I'm just going to throw it out to whoever makes the motion. I don't know if this will hold up or not, but this is probably a first for me. I, I consider myself generally very pro-business and I'm all for, you know, as much marketing as possible, but only because of the precedent that we could be setting for other signs when it comes to going through, going against the sign ordinance, and the fact of the, the time and effort that was put into, and I wasn't privy to all the discussions, I, I understand that, but with respect to the, the committee that put a lot of work into that, I am a proponent of limiting the sign to 52 feet.
Through the chair?
Yes, Commissioner?
Commissioner Adams.
Go ahead, Commissioner Adams.
I would just want to point out that there's a lot of our ordinances and items that have been put in place for quite a while. And there are case-by-case spaces when we Um, and there are case-by-case bases when we need to make adjustments, um, to meet the requirements and the evolution of retail. And we are in a significant nexus shift right now in retail. Um, our assignment at our mall is, is very nice, but it is inadequate, um, for them to be able to attract some of the larger leasing, um, opportunities that we want in our community. Um, our mall is somewhat landlocked, um, as you all know, and it is very difficult, um, for them to find ways to expose the tenants that are in that building. So I think that we need to keep that in mind. I think her point was right on target, in the fact that there are not a lot of other retails, um, buildings and items that would require us to make these provisions on a regular basis. This is somewhat unique, having that highway, um, frontage and the size of this particular facility that we're considering. So I do believe that setting precedence on this item would not have a significant impact on the sign ordinance moving forward. So I'd like you to think about that consideration, um, as we move forward with this potential motion.
And that is noted. Thank you, Commissioner Adams. Anyone else?
I have a question to the chair. This is Commissioner Schaefer. Um, from a usage clarity standpoint, are these, uh, the, the top portion, is that available to people who have kiosks in the mall, or is it only available to the storefront of the mall?
It, it would be available to anyone who's a tenant at the mall. So that could be a pop-up tenant, um, that's there for six months, and it could also be a kiosk tenant as well.
So, do you have certain requirements or, or things that folks have to meet in order to be able to be somebody in a kiosk in that mall?
Well, outside of approving their use, their use has to be in compliance with, you know, with what we allow for uses. Um, and, and we, they would go through the same qualifying process that every other tenant goes through, so.
I, I guess what I'm getting to is, if, is it possible that somebody in a voting election cycle could put up a kiosk there for a certain candidate, and then they get time to put a, put that candidate's name up, up on that sign?
No, quite a few of our leases actually restrict, uh-
That's what I'm getting at. So there are some restrictions of the usage for the kiosks?
Of course.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I would say that would also, um, fall under, you know, potential issue with the city. We, we have a specific section regarding campaigns and a requirement on the size and the location and the height, and so I think that would raise a red flag with the city also, that it would violate the campaign, um, sign rules.
That's just an example. I'm act- this may be some other uses of, of a kiosk that maybe a lot of people aren't real thrilled with, but they meet your requirements to be there, and then they get some signage up there, and they're gonna put some signs up that a lot of the residents here might not like.
Sure.
And I'm just trying to gauge if that's a possibility, that, that it could happen, and you're telling me, yeah, it could. It depends on what your requirements are to have somebody set up a kiosk there.
Sure. And, and, you know, our anchor tenants have pretty strict, uh, language that, that restricts uses that are, we would probably, a typical person would consider undesirable uses.
Right.
Um, so really, those are kind of sifted through on their own.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or motions?
Through the chair. This is Jana.
Commissioner Shannon, go ahead.
I'd like to, uh, move that we determine the project is categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to CEQA guidelines, section fifteen, three-one-one, accessory structures, and approve the permit number twenty dash oh-four to allow the construction of a larger and higher monument sign, as well as approve an electronic message board as part of the sign at the Yuba Sutter Mall, now known as the Yuba Sutter Marketplace, subject to the conditions of approval.
Commissioner Adams second to that motion?
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Is, are there any comments or additional discussion? None? Okay, I'm gonna make one comment, and that is that, um, I, I definitely understand, uh, the environment in which we are in with respect to retail, and, um, for that purpose, I am not going to let that, um, uh, take my vote to a, to a negative. It was just a, a desire to see if that, uh, if that was out there, the, um, the ability to do that, so. Anyway, uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, uh, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote for the first, for the, uh, motion.
Commissioner Shannon?
Commissioner Shannon?
Um, that would be I. I'm sorry, I didn't understand you.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Approve.
Commissioner Ali?
Aye.
Commissioner Adams?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Blake?
No.
Chairperson Eyler?
Aye.
Okay. So you guys have a sign.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Uh, you know, David's probably jumping on that one.
The sign guy's having a heart attack. He's like, oh my God. Come on, December twenty-third, you sure? All right. So we're gonna have, uh, we have additional agenda items, so, um, anyway. Thank you very much, everybody. Okay. Um, moving on to the next item for future agenda items.
Okay. So, um, so really, the, uh, the key, the key comments on this is, I appreciate the flexibility with having the special meeting. With the holidays, we, we are canceling, uh, both meetings in November, and so the upcoming meeting at the end, um, I, it's right before Thanksgiving, we're gonna, um, cancel. And then also, I'm proposing right now, due to, um, what's in the queue, is to cancel the December ninth and, and the December twenty-third meeting. And then we'll have, um, a special December seventeenth meeting on Thursday, is what I'm proposing right now. We have a couple of projects in the queue regarding Richland Housing, um, a hundred-and-seventy-six unit apartment complex, um, coming through for a development plan, and then an use, a potential use permit regarding rest and using a facility on King Avenue. And so in order to package those and get them out, um, as the Richland Housing project is finalizing some information, and then working around the holiday closure with Thanksgiving, um, I'd like to cancel that December ninth meeting, and then push that meeting to December seventeenth on the Thursday, and then we'll cancel the, the, um, the fourth Tuesday of the month there before Christmas. And so, um, so that's regarding the next items.
What was the other item besides rest?
The Richland Housing Village. And so it's a hundred-and-seventy-six unit, multi-phase, um, three-story apartment complex, and, and they're looking to get an entitlement so that they could put in for a grant. And so the project isn't funded at this point, but it's part of the grant application in the way HUD, um, smits money, um, through the housing authority. They need to have the project fully entitled, and, and pretty much the budget and, and everything laid out with that application that goes in in February. So they're trying to meet a strict deadline to get that in.
Are they turning that into a HUD property? Is that what you're saying?
So Richland Housing, they receive HUD money. Um, and so inside, um, in, inside the Richland Housing, I, I would have to have the director to, it'd be a great question, but my understanding is that it's parceled up recently over the last decade, based on the funding sources they receive, on which, um, what money's state versus what's federal.
So they're buy- I mean, assuming they're buying the property, is that what you're saying, and they're gonna, Richland Housing's building the units?
Richland Housing partners with a, um, an entity, um, that builds the units and works as the financing mechanism, but then Richland Housing, um, manages them.
But I mean, the property's selling.
Similar to New Haven.
It's, I mean, they're, they're going forward with, with the development plans. They're gonna build that. I'm asking that because I, I had the opportunity to list that for John, and, and I just, I didn't-
No, 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 so I want to make sure this is not into confuse with the Lincoln Road.
Oh, okay, that's what I was thinking it was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You said a hundred-and-seventy-six units, which is what that's paring down to these days. That's why I was-
Um, so, uh, so not to confuse it with the, yeah, similar area, but this will actually be in the southeast corner of Richland Housing, off of Garden Highway in Per- in the, in their, um-
Gotcha.
You go back into Percy along the airport there.
Okay, gotcha. Sorry.
Okay. And, uh, next item, any other questions for Ben for the December schedule? Hopefully January, we're back to normal.
Through the chair?
Yes. Commissioner Blake?
Commissioner Blake, yes. Um, I don't know that I heard all of that correctly. I heard the project, so I'm to understand our next commission meeting and final for the year is December seventeenth?
Correct. I will send out a follow-up email here this week, um, or get it out tomorrow, um, or soon thereafter, but the, we will cancel the November twenty-fifth meeting. We're canceling the December ninth and twenty-third meeting, and we will have one planning commission meeting on December seventeenth. We're currently, there's two items planned, the Richland Housing, uh, project and a use permit for the rotating church, shelter.
Okay. All right. Next item, oh, anybody else? Okay, hearing none. Uh, next item is the Development Services Director report.
All right, so, um, there's been a lot going on. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know I sent out an email. Information was, is a couple of weeks old when it went out, but it kind of had a list of the major, uh, building and planning activities that are happening within the city. Um, it's, it's definitely picked up with some residential developments, so we're starting to look at some subdivision maps, um, that are coming in that I hope to bring forward in, in the January, February timeline, uh, for review and consideration. There's also been, um, um, some activity with lot line adjustments and, um, and a lot of building going on right now that's, that's keeping us busy. And so, um, besides that, I would say that the, the power mark has resubmitted, so I'm hoping to make progress with bringing that power mark application for the Western Parkway and Twenty forward, and then, let's see, applica- yeah, I want to remind the group that, uh, the planning commission, um, there's three commissioners that are, that are, um, up for term, um, as of the end of Ja- of February, and so the application period is at the end of this month, so eleven-thirty for anybody that's, uh, um, reapplying or that you know of it, that's a candidate for the planning commission. I've recently hired two assistant planners, and so, um, Jaspreet Core, um, has been with us, uh, she's been, um, uh, she's accepted the position as full-time as one of the planners, and then also, um, a planner that, um, is, um, is a graduate from Utah State, um, that is out of the area right now, that is, that is looking to relocate here, and working to relocate here. So I hope to have her on board in a couple of months, and then we will, um, continue to build the department, hopefully, and get the experience, and then backfill with an analyst, um, for Jaspreet's role to help us with the housing segment of the department. Besides that, I really, um, I don't have much at this time, and I'm open for questions.
Okay. Anything on our past projects that have come up? That, or is, I mean, we've had quite a few projects that have kind of, just kind of stalled, or, uh, for example, the hotels, or anything?
I would say Hooper Ranch, um, and also, so the, a couple of the residential developments, so East Sanborn, um, that infill, they're, they're bringing an item forward to city council, I believe in the December, to, um, finalize the subdivision agreement, and then move forward with the parcel split. So you'll see that one, uh, move forward real quick. That, that's kind of the last, um, that's basically where the, um, developer really puts, um, that's where the rubber meets the road, because with that agreement, they have to put a bond, um, out and, and put money down as collateral that they're gonna move forward and, and, and split that parcel into the, the multi-units. And so that's happening in December for the East Sanborn. I've had a lot of interest in the Hooper Ranch subdivision. There's been a lot of discussions from a, a Sacramento company. I think they're doing their due diligence, um, regarding, um, just what, what's available for financing through, um, um, different financing mechanisms, and then also the city's criteria for, um, how we review a master plan, um, units, um, and then also, um, just going through the real specifics of it, and it sounds like they've hired a local engineer to possibly move forward. And so I'm hoping, um, that they, they've moved forward with that, and, and, and that gains traction and goes. But it seems like there is definitely a lot of interest, um, in that from multiple developers in this, this lea- the last one, my understanding, is that they're acquiring the property moving forward, so.
Okay.
Um, besides that, the hotel, um, I know Fern Feathers i- is a big one that is, was kind of stalled and, and taking quite a while for financing and for different reasons with the plans. And so we did, the, the permit has been issued for Fern Feathers, and so, um, in relation to the, um, um, it's the, um, daycare for, for animals, I'm trying, I don't know, the, the pet hotel?
Hotel?
The pet hotel here, um, kind of kitty-corner to us, and I, I have seen them out there starting to do the underground work, and so they're making progress with that. And the hotel, as far as the, um, the hotel site, um, on Shasta and, and, and B Street there, I know, have they resubmitted yet? I think we're still waiting for resubmitment. So we're, we're waiting for resubmitment on the current comments and, and hopefully moving forward with that.
And then what about the, um, the gas station slash coffee shop on Clark and Calusa Highway?
So the gas station element ha- has, um, they're not moving forward with the gas station. And so they've submitted plans for basically a coffee shop, um, i.e. Starbucks, with a, with a commercial tenant. So they're, they're splitting the property. The property is already two parcels with, um, the bent prop and with the gas station. And so what they're doing is they're reconfiguring the parcel through a lot line adjustment, so the, the, the line now go, there'll be a north parcel and a south parcel, but there'll be a conjoining, um, a conjoining building, basically that they're gonna build as for a future ten improvement. I've heard maybe possibly a, a sandwich shop is what maybe the, um, the owner has described to me that he's working with. So with that, with the gas station going away, really that use permit is void for the gas station, but the portion related to the driveway for the coffee shop stands. And so, um, so right now, they're working with Caltrans on their, um, permit for the, for the work on the highway, and, um, the building pretty much stays the same on the, on that north segment, but the gas station on the vacant lot in the southeast corner i- is, is not happening.
Why is that not happening?
My understanding is, is that, um, they're working at another place in town, and so maybe at, um, you'll see that come through, um, at the Waffle Shop area. And so there were some conflicts with, um, you know, the limited knowledge that I had was that between, um, and, um, the franchisee versus new development, um, portions of the company weren't talking to each other. And so when there, when there was announcement that there's two spots, two similar, two different groups working on a similar product, um, they, they've decided to go to a different location there, at, at possibly the Waffle Barn. But I haven't seen any full submittal on it.
Great.
And the Starbucks piece that you're talking about, that's gonna have a drive-through?
Correct. So the same configuration that came to the planning commission, it just, it, now, there's no gas element on the south half-
Right.
In the south portion of the building.
No, I was just focusing in my head on how Antonio's do, but their drive-through, that's not working out too well, since they're backing up out on the Twenty pretty, pretty consistently.
Yeah, I would, I would tell you that on a code enforcement side, and then also working with that, that's definitely, uh, raised its flag, it raised its head, uh, multiple times, and specifically the last couple of months. And so we've been working with Antonio's. We met with them, I, I met with them with the chief of, of police and code enforcement a, a month or two back, just telling them, hey, you, it's time to do something. Caltrans, it's a safety hazard. Caltrans is threatening to close, close it down, or ask what the city's gonna do about it. And so we met on-site there, and, and basically with, um, you know, worked through options. The first option wa- was he, he went to a point-of-sale system, similar to, um, Dutch Brothers or to, um, um, In-N-Out, that, um, he's re- to a point-of-sale system, similar to Dutch Brothers or to In-N-Out, that he's recently implemented. And he's saying he's trying to do it to help. I, my feeling is that just the faster he gets it, the more people come in. You know, it's, it's a good problem to have, but the location is just unacceptable. And so, so the point-of-sale system didn't work. That was the recent try. And now he's working with, basically, the designer for the Starbucks, the coffee shop, to see what he could do to reconfigure it. He's, he's presented a couple of drafts to me, just to see what we could do. So you might see something come, I, I don't know if it's with an existing, I got to look into that, but at the moment, we're telling him, hey, you got to do something. And that's either if it's rerouted back around the alley, or if it's somebody's got to physically shut them down, if it, you know, if they go out there with cones at some point before, because it is a safety hazard. But right now, he's talking about making the driveway exit a little farther east, and then cars come back in and come back around. And so.
I actually literally almost got in an accident there about a month ago. And when I, when I finally realized that the traffic was dead stopped, and I got into that other lane, thank God, because nobody was there, there was like seven cars along the 20, back, seven of them, backed up on the 20.
Yeah, which is, which is frustrating. And, and you know, what the business owner's telling me is that he sends a person out there at those peak times and tells them they can't wait, and they say, no, we're going to wait, and it gets into this weird situation, and it's going to get, we're, you know, we want to make the business successful, we want to respect the COVID issue, but at the same time, it is a hazard right now. So we're trying to, so the current push is he's supposed to come up with a plan with a revised drive-through layout that he's working through.
All right, awesome. Great. Okay, any other questions for the Development Services Director report?
This is Commissioner Adams.
Yes, Commissioner Adams.
Ben, any news on our Franklin project across from Windco there?
There is not. If anything, I think I heard it might be up for sale, is what I.
Yep. Any other questions?
This is Commissioner Shannon.
Yes.
Are you finished, Lori?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I wanted to ask, since we're talking about that potential Starbucks, that really is not a good place for that, no matter what. I don't know how they're going to configure that. We have the problem with Antonio's that you know, but I know that when you go into Windco, that Starbucks backs clear up to the stoplight. And it's, but that's private property, I understand that. But given the fact that that's Highway 20, you know, the only thing I can think of that would make sense is if access off of 20 is completely blocked and they have to go in on the alley and queue all the way around and come back out on the alley. I, I can't support that. And I would go on record right now as not being able to support that because of watching the queuing. And even Dutch Bros has a problem at times, but Starbucks is ridiculous. So, you know, it's really, really important that we all look at how that's going to queue. And if, if anybody has a question, go to a Starbucks in the morning in Windco, go to another Starbucks and watch how, how the traffic queues. And it's, you know, the time that is the heaviest is the time when there's the most traffic of people going to work and coming home. So we really, really have to be on it, on, on that. So, okay, I'm done.
Definitely understood.
Got to say it.
The la, the last thing Public Works and I want to deal with is, is a traffic safety hazard out on the highway. It's a little tricky. What they're configuring is a U shape to try to maximize that length as much as possible, where they come in and it wraps around the back of the building and then goes back out. And then there's also strict criteria about managing it with some parameters in there as, as to shut it off, or that they, or the potential of losing that use permit. But, but definitely understood, for sure.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a report of actions of the County Planning Commission. Commissioner Shannon?
Okay, the last thing that the Sutter County did was recommend approval to the supervisors of Sutter Point, which was a development, a residential, a lake, some, it's, it's a multi-use planned community with office space and retail, and it looks to be a much better development than has been proposed in the past. I was, I worked on the original South Sutter County in 2000, when I was originally appointed to the Sutter County Planning Commission. And this is far and away better planned, and they've got their ducks in a row. And then we had a meeting last night that we didn't have. It was canceled due to lack of quorum, but it was for a ranchette subdivision on Markley and Township. But the, the land is already zoned for estate lots. It's just being subdivided to allow them to have estate lots and to develop them. And that's being proposed by Inner West. That's all I have, all I have.
Through the chair, this is Commissioner Adams.
Yes, Commissioner Adams.
Jana, who's the developer, or the developers, plural, in Sutter Point Development?
Oh, my gosh, off the top of my head, I can't tell you.
Are they all local or are they all area?
No, George Carpenter, and he has been, he was the one that was speaking on behalf of the company. The company's name has changed, but the biggest part of it is local. I just can't tell you who it is.
When you say local, last, last check, wasn't it Sacramento area developers that are local to that? No?
Some of it is, I want to say Lennar, but I, I'm probably wrong. But I think there's a whole, there's a lot of local activity, a lot of local players.
Good. All right. Any other questions for the Sutter County Planning Commission? All right, hearing none. With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meet. Oh, any other questions overall?
I just wanted to share a historical note for the newer commissioners, that the sign ordinance is one of the newest aspects of our code, most recently updated. There was a process that was developed over 10 years, gathering information, et cetera, going out into the community and seeing the direction that the community wanted. But then the commission and the staff worked for a couple of years, going through various iterations of it. And it's probably only been in place for about three years. So it is one of the newest pieces, and it was with the idea of maintaining the feel in our community while still allowing business to thrive. And business was involved in the decision-making or the discussion. So for the newer commissioners, it's one of the newest ordinances.
Great.
Yeah, I would tell you, just to add on to that, I mean, I know this is controversial a little bit. I know for me, I struggled with that as we decided, and we've been working on this for, you know, they originally approached us to get our feel for a taller sign, like you said, 85 feet or 82 feet it was in March, and we told them, you know, that's just way too tall, and the precedent that the council and the planning commission has worked on over the last couple of decades to bring these signs down. We don't want big, ugly 99 cents to our signs. With this one, what swayed us to move forward at the staff level with the recommendation was just the, the, the level of effort they put into the sign. It's a nice-looking sign. I think they say it's close to three quarters of a million dollars that they're going to put to build the sign. The site is 10 acres, so the precedent setting, I wasn't too concerned that this is going to happen again down, down the road without a major commercial center being, being built. And, and I guess I was getting caught up on the eight feet, you know, and so I struggled with that, too. But then when I was considering the hotel that we can, we allowed to have a little higher use to the southwest, some of the antennas that are going up in the area, and with the speeds on the highway, that, the battle for the eight feet, I let, I wanted to have the commissioners voice their opinion on it. And so that's kind of where I landed, but I definitely respect everyone's opinion on that, having a quality sign in our community that lasts for quite a while.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting.